Good evening and welcome to the Greenfield Public Schools School Committee Meeting for Wednesday, December 9, 2020. This meeting is being held fully remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GLC 30A, Section 20. We'll move right into the agenda. Member Johnson Musad, would you do a roll call for us, please?
Member Karen.
Here.
Vice Chair Ekstrom.
Here.
Member Hollins.
Here.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Poiety.
Here.
Member Wall.
Here.
Mayor Weidergardner.
He's definitely here. She must be.
I don't have audio on her, but I got a visual that says she's here.
Here, here, here.
We are all here.
Wonderful. So I call the meeting to order at 6:02 PM. We'll do next the approval of the minutes, which are from, am I right, Thursday, November 19th, are the right correct minutes for this meeting that we're approving? I believe that's correct. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from Thursday, November 19th? Sorry, people, we'll try to take care of that.
So moved.
It's Member Wall with the motion in a second.
Weidergardner, second.
And any discussion of the minutes? Hearing none, let's go ahead and do a roll call for approval.
Member Karen.
Hello? I'm here. Sorry, I was getting a lot of feedback. I can hear you now. Yes is my answer.
Okay, Vice Chair Ekstrom.
Yes.
Member Hollins.
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Poiety.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Weidergardner.
Yes.
Motion carries. All in favor.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move right into public comment. For those of you who have not.
I'm sorry, this is Susan Farber just jumping in here.
That's fine.
That was to approve the minutes of November 19th. Are we going to discuss the minutes of November 24th?
Do we have both of those in the packet? We must, huh? Is it just after it? Okay, why am I not seeing it in there? Ah, there they are. I'm sorry. Let's also have a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting on Monday, November 24th. Sorry for the confusion.
So moved. Johnson Musad.
In a second.
Second. Ekstrom.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call to approve.
Member Karen.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom.
Yes.
Member Hollins. Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Poiety.
Yes.
Member Wall.
Yes.
Mayor Weidergardner.
Yes.
Motion carries. All in favor.
Thank you. I don't see any other minutes of meetings in there, so we'll move into public comment. And thank you, Susan Farber, for getting me back on track there. For people who have not joined us in the past for our public comment on a remote platform, we do it two different ways. We will start with anyone who's joined us here on the WebEx platform and is able to use the chat function to type their name into the chat indicating that they want to do public comment. We'll take those first, and you'll have three minutes. Once we've gone through everyone who has indicated their interest in the chat box, we will do a verbal request for public comment for people who are joining us on the phone or otherwise unable to use the typing function. And Member Johnson Musad will call the first person. Again, you'll have three minutes. I'll walk you through it. We will time you. You don't have to time yourself.
Not seeing anyone in the chat yet.
I don't believe that. All right, people, step up. Don't be shy. You've all been contacting us, saying that you want to make public comment. Now's your chance.
Jackson Karen would like to speak.
Jackson Karen is up first. Jackson, please state your name and your town that you live in, and you'll have three minutes. Go ahead.
Oh, we've lost video. Can you hear us?
We can hear you.
Okay, we can't hear you, but Jackson's gonna go ahead. Hi, I'm Jackson Karen. I live in Greenfield. I like, I don't, I'm not really good at this stuff sometimes, so, like, I like to play hockey, and I think, I really think it should happen. I mean, that's not really a good reason for it to happen, but, like, for example, like, you think about it like this, those kids who are out there playing right now are still playing for other teams, and they're, if we bring them to Greenfield, we have better control over where they're playing and how they're playing. And I don't, I'm not good at this. Um, I don't know. I mean, I want to play because it helps my mental health, and I feel better when I do sports, and I feel just better about myself and the world when I play sports, and hockey's just something I really like, and it's a sport I really enjoy.
You did great, Jackson. Thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Good job, Jackson.
You did a great job. Member Johnson Musad, do we have anyone else?
We do. Sean Lavoin.
Sean Lavoin, go ahead. Do you have three minutes? Please start with your full name and the town that you live in.
My name is Sean Lavoin. I live in Greenfield.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to first thank the school committee for hearing us tonight. My wife and I live in Greenfield, and we have two children that attend Greenfield High School. I've been speaking tonight to understand that winter sports are on the agenda, and I'd like to share with you my experience with youth sports, in particular with ice hockey, since the COVID-19 pandemic has begun. I'm currently the president of the Franklin County Hockey Association, which is based here in Greenfield, but our family has resided in many different towns in Franklin County, quite similar to the towns that make up the co-op of the Greenfield High School hockey team. At FCHA, we have always made safety a priority, and this year, what it means to be safe has really been taken to new heights. Based on guidance from the state, we have been able to successfully hold practices and games at Collins Boylan Arena for the past three months. Everyone that enters the arena is wearing a face mask at all times, and this includes players while they are on the ice during a practice or game, coaches and officials at all time, and all spectators. Spectators have been limited to the guidance set forward by the state to two adults per participant, and all spectators are required to maintain social distancing. Locker rooms are closed, and participants can only enter the arena 10 minutes prior to their ice session to further limit interactions. Upon a practice or game ending, players take off their skates and depart the arena immediately and take off their hockey gear outside. All safety guidelines have been shared with parents and continue to be shared as new guidance evolves from the state or mass hockey or USA hockey. At FCHA, we've been able to provide for a safe experience for over 125 players across Franklin County because of the efforts of our players, coaches, volunteers, and families to follow the safety protocols set forward by the state and our arena operator, FMC. Our families have been outstanding in following the safety protocols in place. We play teams based in Western Massachusetts, where people live in towns such as Long Meadow, Chicopee, Agawam, Amherst, East Hampton, and Westfield, just to name a few. And the arenas we primarily play in would be the same as the high school team, which would include Springfield, West Springfield, Holyoke, and here in Greenfield as well. I just want to share with you that it can be done, as you guys pondered the decisions on winter sports tonight. Ice hockey can be played, and it can be safe for our children to participate. At FCHA, we've endorsed a strong commitment to safety, and I'm sure the same can be done at the high school level, to give our children an outlet to play a sport they love while keeping everyone safe at the same time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We appreciate your feedback. Member Johnson Musad, anyone else?
Doug Selwyn.
Mr. Selwyn, go ahead.
Thank you. Doug Selwyn, Greenfield. Good evening. I'm very glad that the Advisory Committee for Racial Justice is on the agenda for tonight. Having a second school committee member assigned will allow them to get started. If we're really about justice, we have to stand up when injustice is what is before us, and that's what I want to talk about tonight related to the MCAS. The disparities in our community, the challenge for some families in dealing with internet and broadband issues, the challenges of families who have lost family members, who have family members who have had to continue to work on the front lines, who lack health insurance, the inequities in our society make it impossible to pretend that we have a level playing field. And those who will be most harmed are the ones who are always most harmed, and that is students of color, students living in poverty, ELL students, students with special needs, who I can't imagine are having their IEPs fully complied with from home. There are strong recommendations from 112 school committees around the state against taking the MCAS this year, and in fact, they've recommended suspending it for three years. There are no assessment professionals who would put any weight on the test this year, given all that has happened and is happening. There can be no validity or reliability in a test given during a pandemic. The state seems to be willing to spend $30 million that it spends every year on testing for a test that's worthless, that will raise the stress level on everyone in the district, and will harm, most particularly, our most vulnerable students and families. So I urge that advisory committee to take a look at the MCAS, bring it to the full school committee, and have the school committee join with the other school committees around the state who are working hard to say no to the MCAS this year and for subsequent years. Thank you very much.
We, I didn't hear you.
Sorry.
But we do have another person, Ryan Cody.
Go ahead. Ryan Cody, go ahead. You have three minutes. Just state your name and your town you live in before you get started.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ryan Cody, and I'm a junior at Greenfield High School. And last year, I was a captain of the varsity basketball team in the Greenfield. And I'm devastated to hear the news of our season being canceled. I missed our entire season last year due to an injury in the first game of the season, and this year, we'll make it two consecutive seasons that I'll be missing. What was that?
Please go ahead. I'm gonna mute whoever that was. Sorry about that.
I speak on behalf of the entire boys team by saying that we are not happy with the fact that basketball has already been delayed, and we wish it to begin immediately. I know for a fact that every single player and coach wants us to be playing right now, and even if there were some of us who didn't, they would absolutely have the option to stay home and stay safe from the risk of COVID-19. Every single player knows the risks that they are taking before they step on the court, so why are we not allowed to make the decisions for ourselves? You may think that this decision is to keep people safe, but studies have clearly shown that the virus does not affect younger people. We don't care if there are no fans. We don't care if coaches have to wear masks. And honestly, we don't even care if we have to wear masks while we're playing. We just want to play basketball. I've been playing basketball for Greenfield Public Schools since I was in kindergarten, and there are many of you on this board who I've never seen attend a single game. Since you are so distanced from the student athletes at Greenfield High School, let me tell you what some players will be missing out on by being stripped of their season. Mason Meadows will never score 1,000 points. Katie Hazelton will never break the school record. Many of the seniors will never be able to go to the cage, never win Western Mass, and many of the other things that we'll never get to experience in a high school basketball players. These things may not be important to you at all, but to us athletes, we have dreamed of these moments for our entire lives, and these are memories that we will never have. Everyone in Western Mass knew that we were going to be the team to beat, which is why I know some of us worked extremely hard to get our bodies ready for the season. Almost every other school across the country is able to play basketball right now, but we can't. This whole issue has brought to my attention that the culture around Greenfield sports is completely dying because of the lack of concern for student athletes and their success. My friends and I from all across Western Mass have been playing basketball games safely for the past six months, and everyone in the world knows it. So why do you still deny us the right to play while representing our school? Canceling our basketball season is actually the worst thing that you can do for our safety, because if you cancel it, we will just be playing basketball on our own, hanging out with our friends, going to parties, and none of us will be wearing masks while doing so. So to think that ending our basketball season is doing anything is just stupid. I've still yet to hear one legitimate reason for why we should not be able to play competitive sports right now. Every single person knows the risks that is being taken before we step on the court. So why do you still think that you know more than every athlete and parent in the Greenfield Public School system? Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. We really appreciate hearing your comments. Anyone else for public comment from the chat? Member Johnson Musad?
Not in the chat, no.
I would like to speak.
There are. There are. I'm sorry. I might have to scroll down. Let me see. We've got a little list here. Ron Lenoi?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Lenoi, go ahead. You have three minutes. State your full name and where you live.
Sure. My name is Ron Lenoi Jr., and I reside right here in Greenfield. Not only do I live in town, but I am the current head coach of the Franklin County Hockey Association, or FCHA 18U, our ice hockey team. This team is comprised of student athletes who would play for our high school hockey team. As Sean Lavoin earlier mentioned, the FCHA 18U team has been playing since September against youth organizations from East Hampton, Ludlow, Springfield, and the surrounding towns. With the Commonwealth's game restrictions, i.e. wearing masks, traffic flow, no locker rooms, et cetera, in place, we have not had a regular scheduled game canceled due to COVID-19, nor had any positive test results, even as town cases increased. You may recall, the state shut down ice hockey for two weeks between October 23rd and November 7th, but that was because of increased length COVID-19 cases. But I want to remind you that the governor's task force found those cases to be contributed to tournament, excuse me, and after-game activities. Out-of-state games with little to no restrictions, and organizations not allowing contact tracing, all of these items have been eliminated by the current restrictions. The task force found nothing to link the cases to actual gameplay itself. Ultimately, it comes down to the health and safety of our student athletes. If winter sports are not allowed to play, then think about the mental health of these kids. Students who play high school sports do it because they have a genuine love and passion for them. With no winter sports, these players would be forced into more isolation and be distraught over it. They need these outlets to stay mentally healthy. In conclusion, ice hockey has been and is currently being played in a safe manner with the imposed restrictions. I urge the Greenfield School Committee, like their Dale Monahan Regional counterparts, to vote in favor of having winter sports. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Member Johnson Musad, who's next?
This time, there is no one left in the chat, but I would heard someone else's voice.
Okay, so we'll take anyone who wants to verbally be acknowledged for a public comment. Don't be shy. Just go ahead and step up and let us know, and we'll call on you.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Devon Kelleher. I would like to speak on behalf of, as an advocate for the GreenWave hockey team.
Go ahead. What town do you live in?
I live in Greenfield.
Okay, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. So, this letter is for the Honorable Mayor of the Greenfield of Massachusetts, Roxanne Weidergardner, and the School Committee and the Board of Health. I'm writing this letter and speaking out to advocate for the GreenWave hockey team and continued safe play. I plan to address the mental health of the athletes, as well as the practices of safe hockey during this challenging time we are all navigating through. I would like to start by letting you know that I'm a hockey mom, and I'm part of, not only a hockey team, but a hockey family. In the past years, there have been times where I see the hockey family more frequently than I see some of my own family. Hockey is not just a sport, it's a way of life. The current pandemic has shut down ways of life that are taking a great toll on many of us, and in particular, many of our children. They cannot spend time with friends, engage in normal, everyday activities, and worst of all, many of them cannot attend school in person. This is impacting their mental health. The last shred of normalcy many of the players have at this time is hockey or other school sports. School sports are important for the following reasons, according to the Public School Review. There are 10 reasons why school sports benefit students. Without going into significant detail, those reasons include community representation, fitness, improved academics, the importance of the three Ps, persistence, patience, and practice, teamwork and cooperation, positive mentors, social relationships, leadership skills, time management skills, success mindset. Many of these topics are seconded by the National Federation of High School Associations. This includes increased school attendance and increased GPAs, as well as mental and physical health. The National Center for Biotechnology, NCBI, National Library of Medicine, MLM, and the National Institute of Health, NIH, discuss the importance of the engagement next to correct curricular activities for youth, which can decrease anxiety and depressive symptoms. I've had parents reach out to me explaining for the first time ever, they're speaking with their children's primary care physicians about therapeutic services, medication, due to the overwhelming nature of change and lack of normalcy in their lives. As professionals and educators, we already know this information. The information I'm not sure you all know is that Massachusetts hockey, the Massachusetts hockey community, including the MIAA, MA Hockey, USA Hockey, PVIA, EEA, and the GreenWave community have worked diligently to create safety plans, protocols, and guidelines to ensure the safety in continuing hockey. Many of the youth caregivers and coaches who participate in GreenWave hockey programs are not new to this information. Since the start of the hockey season three months ago, we have abided by these rules. Our children have played on travel hockey teams, and safety has always come first. Some of the changes to youth hockey have already been discussed here tonight. Never did I think players would be gearing up for their practices and games in their cars and parking lots. They cannot go to locker rooms.
That was three minutes.
Okay, thank you. I'm almost done. Can I finish?
Chair Poiety, you're on mute if you were trying to respond.
Go ahead and finish.
Okay, thank you. I know everyone is worried, and I understand this. I'm worried too. I'm not only worried about the virus, but I'm worried about the safety and mental health of my child, his friends, and our hockey family. These are amazing, talented, and great people. I ask you to please consider keeping hockey a part of their lives for the 2020 high school season. Psychiatrist Dr. Brock Chris Holmes, the first director general of the World Health Organization, stated, "Without mental health, there can be no true physical health." Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And can you just give us your name again, please?
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. We missed your name.
Yep, it's Kathleen Devon Kelleher.
Kathleen Devon Kelleher.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment? You need to speak up now.
Hi, Devon.
Any public comment that can't use the chat function? We'll also check the chat function one more time to see if anyone's indicated they're there. I'm not hearing any.
No one, no.
Move on from, we are gonna move on from public comment, and I'm looking for a motion from a school committee member to rearrange the agenda for the evening, to have us next go with item nine, winter athletics, rather than item four, committee reports. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Mayor Weidergardner.
Second, Johnson Musad.
Great. Any discussion of that?
Chair Poiety, have you heard yet from our student representatives? And do you, do you?
I have not heard from any student representatives this evening.
Could you consider hearing from the student reps and then taking that amended item of business?
Oh, sure, sure. I can do that. Yep. Are they on the line?
I know that Shane is here.
Great. Okay, so we'll go back to the, we'll go back to that motion in a second. Let's hear from the student representatives, and are they speaking on something specific or just a?
I think this is a general update from the high school.
Wonderful. Great. And Shane, is there someone, Shane Toomey, is that who it is?
Yes.
And is there someone else with him?
I can't see our other student rep. I was expecting both of our student reps, but it may be that we have one student rep this evening.
Oh, there you are, Shane. Great. So you're on mute, but go ahead and unmute, and we'll happily take your report. Thanks for being here.
Hello, my name is Shane Toomey. First, I'm gonna talk about student council updates. So student council made a jam board for each staff member, just to thank them for all they've been doing for the school and send positive messages through that. We also had a virtual spirit week prior to Thanksgiving break to boost everyone's spirits, and we're continuing our partnership with the Special Olympics, and we'll be starting the virtual best buddy program very soon. Updates from Key Club, we're happy to hold our annual GHS Turkey Trot remotely from Miss Moore and the Key Club, and Miss Moore and the Key Club did organize the annual Turkey Trot, and it went very well. We had a good amount of participants and started a wall of fame. Wall of Fame winners were sent certificates for their participation, along with eight lucky winners who are drawn in a raffle. They received Dunkin' Donuts gift cards, and we look forward to a time when we can try again together. The Key Club is always looking for ways to support Greenfield's community, and we will be doing a drive-by food drop, drive-by food drop-off on Friday, December 18th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. Anyone interested in dropping off non-perishable food items can simply drive up to the front entrance of Greenfield High School and place in the food donation boxes. All food donations will be collected and directly donated to the Greenfield Salvation Army. GHS TV, Mr. Lee Wolf and his GHS TV class have published two editions of The Wave, an online media school website. Students have written articles, as well as created videos, and all editions are posted on the GHS website, so feel free to check that out. And the virtual coffee house, so the French club certainly wasn't going to let remote learning stop them from hosting one of the most fun events of the school year, the coffee house. This year, however, students and staff had to videotape their talent and submit to the French club so they could coordinate all of the videos into one online streaming event. This event will be streamed on Thursday, December 17th, at 6:30 p.m. Be on the lookout for the YouTube link to get some popcorn and enjoy the show. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. That was great. I have a question, though. What is a jam board?
So a jam board is like a virtual whiteboard, almost, so different, so if you're allowed to have editing access, you can get a little sticky note or write directly on it. And so the way we used it is we had like a sticky note, like a virtual sticky note on the middle of it with the staff's name, and different students would just go in and write on a sticky note a positive message for the teacher, and we, so that way, teachers could go over their slide and see all the positive things students wrote for them.
Very cool. Thank you very much for that report. Are there any other questions or comments from school committee members? Awesome. Thank you for being with us. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
And thank you, Superintendent, for reminding me about that. I'd forgotten all about it. So next, we'll try to take up that motion again to move item nine ahead of item four on the agenda.
So moved.
That's the mayor. And a second.
Second, Johnson Musad.
Okay, and any discussion of that? Yeah, let's just go ahead and vote on it. Can you do a roll call, please, Member Johnson Musad?
Member Karen. Member Karen. I see your lips moving, and I see your mute is off, but I can't hear you, so I'm gonna take that as a yes. Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Okay, Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergardner?
Yes.
Motion carries. All in favor.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. So we are on winter athletics, and I am hoping that we may have with us someone representing either the Health Department or the Board of Health. If anyone is on, can you speak to that?
Chair Poiety?
Yes.
I'm here. If you, if you, and I have information from Jennifer Hoffman, as does the superintendent. If you wish Ms. Hoffman to be on, she had something that she had to attend to this evening, but if you wish her to be on, I can certainly text her and have her come on for this discussion.
Well, if you feel like you can answer some- Well, if you feel like you can answer some of the questions and help us with the discussion, we'll, we'll try that.
I think I can, but I, I know my limitations.
Okay, okay.
And I told her to be on standby. I don't think we were thinking it would be this early, so just if, if the time comes, give me a minute, and I will see if I can get her.
Okay.
Away from what it was she had to do.
I would like also to hear just kind of introductory comments framing the conversation from the superintendent, if she so desires, and then also from Mike Kachewski, to give us a sense of where we're at before we move forward with making a decision. Before I give it over to the superintendent, I do want to say thank you to everyone that came to speak to this issue and who's emailed us about this issue. We don't take any of this lightly. And, you know, I, I did have, have a, a conversation earlier today over email with a school committee member who, you know, indicated that many of the emails we'd received were a little bit, I, I don't want to use the word accusatory, because that is not the right word. That's too strong of a word. But there's a, there's this, it was brought up in a number of emails that we're not thinking about students, and we're not thinking about student athletes, when we make these decisions. And I can assure everyone that regardless of whatever decision is made, we spend almost all of our time thinking about the well-being, health, and safety of our students and our staff in the district. So I, I, I would not characterize what we're doing in, in trying to understand what regulations are in front of us and then make a decision to move forward or not with winter sports, the, whether, you know, to equate that with whether or not we care about students. Of course, we care about students. We would not be serving on the school committee, trust me, if we did not care about students. And I'll leave it at that, and I would turn it over if Superintendent Harper has anything she would like to start with. We'll go ahead and do that, and then I'll pass it over to, to Mike Kachewski.
Sure. So I'll just say that, you know, the winter sports season that our athletic director has put together a proposal for involves, obviously, hockey, we've heard a lot about tonight, but also basketball, girls' and boys' basketball. You know, this is something that's important to our students and our community. Our athletic director put together a proposal regarding it, and I think he's going to talk a little bit about the proposal. I do want to say that this is a challenging time, because we, as a school district, have to defer to public health expertise and guidance, and in areas that may not be our first instinct or our first desire. So I do want to say that our athletic director in communication with administration, school committee, and Board of Health are talking about this tonight, and we, we want to have an opportunity to talk a little bit about what the proposal was coming into tonight and where it stands, based on COVID numbers in our area. Mike, do you want to take it from there?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Yeah, so the last week has been very much of a whirlwind week in, in the athletic world. And, you know, the proposal that I put together with last week has changed. It is based on Phase Three, Level Two, excuse me, Step Two Guidance from the EEA. And since all of this has happened, Governor Baker has rolled back, as we all know, to Phase Three, Step One, which Phase Three, Step One, and the latest guidance does say skills and drills and does not say competition. But there are, there are other, there are other EEA guidelines out there that were given in October that, with proper modifications, that you can do competitions, and that's what other schools are right now going by. Late this evening, or late this afternoon, I got an email, or I was in a meeting with the District Athletic Committee from the MIAA and the PVIC, and with new guidance that's coming out supposedly tomorrow or Friday by EEA guidelines, that's going to coincide with Governor Baker, things could change again. And so I basically am coming into this meeting wanting to play sports, wanting to play competition, excuse me, with skills and drills, but I'm afraid that they're going to change again on Friday. And so I'm, I'm coming here, I mean, you can look at the proposal, I can give you the proposal on what the, what the guidelines were when I did this. I can give you a proposal of what I think the guidelines are going to be. Again, as we've all known through this pandemic, things change constantly. And as I said an hour and a half ago, they were different. And so, you know, I'm, I want our kids to play. I want our kids to play like the other schools. I want our kids to compete against those other teams. We can do it safely. We can do it competitively. But I think that we need as, as, not to say what you should do, but I, I think what I would like to have done is that we, as a school committee, approve that we get to get our kids to do something and revisit in January, early January. Let it be skills and drills. Let it be competitions. I mean, they think that's up to you. I mean, of course, I want to do competitions, but I also want to make sure that we have something for our kids to be able to do. We also are in conversations, as I said an hour and a half ago, that we're looking to push the date from January 4th to January 11th, to make it, hopefully, the metrics would go down as we get farther, farther away from Christmas and the holidays. Because we all want this to happen. We all need kids to be in competition. We don't want skills and drills, but if that's what it takes to get our kids, to get our kids out of the house, get our kids active, get our kids involved again together, then, then we'd have to do that. Hockey will not be able to do skills and drills. Hockey does need to have the competition. They need to have the, the bubbles that we put them in as a PVIC. They need to compete. It's, they, they just wouldn't, our kids would also, you know, another point for hockey, our kids, if they had no hockey, they would find hockey, and they'd be traveling all over Boston and South Shore, North Shore. And so we're putting our kids more at risk by not having the hockey season than, than having the hockey season. So I know I'm all over the board. I am, I'm east, west, north, and south, and, and I'm telling you that this is the way my life's been for the last three days, and I'm trying to put it all together and, and, you know, get something for our student athletes, to make our, to make somewhat of a normalcy. And I hate using that word, a normalcy, but, you know, who knows what that's ever going to be again? And every little bit that I can give to our student athletes at Greenfield is, I'm going to fight for them, and, and, you know, I want our school committee to do the right thing. I understand what Board of Health is coming through, but I also want to make sure that we're all doing the right things for our Greenfield community. I, I know the other thing is, does anybody have any questions on the proposal of, you know, the, the safety guidelines? What's, what's asked of, of us, of what we do, what we're going to do for basketball, what we're going to do for hockey? Does anybody, I mean?
I think we will, I think we will have questions, Coach. And what I'd like to do is, before we get to questions and discussion, have Mayor Weidergardner speak to the Board of Health and the city piece of this, and then we'll get to a full complement of, of discussion. So thank you for that introduction. And you know, Coach, I will say, you're getting a taste of what we felt like in August and September. We could not do any rollout of anything, because every requirement kept changing. So I, I empathize a great deal. Mayor, go ahead and, and give us an overview, please.
Okay, I, I'd like to second that. Mike, welcome to my world in terms of being east, west, north, and south on a daily basis in the last few days, which I'll explain in a minute, have, haven't changed that. In fact, I may have even discovered some new directions that don't exist on a map. So what I think would be best for me to do in the absence of Health, interim Health Director Hoffman, is I will just simply read her, her latest letter that came out this afternoon about 2:00 with the Board of Health's recommendations, and I, I, I hope that it's, it's something that you'll understand where it's coming from. So if you'll give me a minute, I did not print it out, so I'll just flip to that and read, and, and then make a couple of comments after that. To all, this is from interim Health Director Jennifer Hoffman. To all, I followed up with the Board of Health this morning to discuss the recommendation from their emergency meeting yesterday afternoon, prior to Governor Baker's recommendation to roll back to Phase Three, Step One. Upon the Board of Health's review of the guidelines from EEOEAA, and I do believe the school committee did receive those guidelines from this same email, and the input from multiple sources, the Board of Health's recommendation is to proceed with Phase Two, Step One. Individual or socially-distanced group activities, non-contact workouts, aerobic conditioning, individual skill work, and drills. I have attached the EEOEAA, that is the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Workplace Safety and Reopening Standards for Businesses and Other Entities Providing Youth and Adult Amateur Sports Activities. The Board of Health stated that we are not allowed to make more lenient standards than the state. So if the guidelines could be met, it would be appreciated by the Board of Health. For reference, page three of the handouts defines higher-risk sports as a substantial likelihood of routine, close, and/or sustained proximity, or deliberate physical contact between participants, and a high probability that respiratory particles will be transmitted between participants. The athletic director stated that, that he would like to have basketball and ice hockey for the winter, both of which fall under the higher-risk category. The guidelines and minimum standards for the modifications to play are found on page four of the guidelines. The Board of Health hopes that its recommendation will be satisfactory for the Greenfield public school community. The Board of Health suggested that we can review in early January, if need be, or adjust if Governor Baker rolls back further, regards Jennifer A. Hoffman, MPH, RVT, interim Health Director. So I will come back on and resume my video. So just for those people that are on the call, and those, thank you very much for your comments, certainly Mr. Lenoys, Mr. Levine, and Ms. Kelleher, and all the others, and the students in particular. So as you can rehear from that, and I will tell you that when they made their first announcement, if they even did that publicly, which I don't believe they did, they had not received, it was early afternoon, because they'd been asked to make a decision very quickly yesterday. In the interim, Governor Baker did what he did. So they revisited it today, and you just heard what their reactions were. And I, I have read it, and I certainly support the Board of Health. I find myself in that untenable position, where I have to both think about the Board of Health, who is, if you're talking front lines, is definitely on the front lines, not necessarily in the care of people, but the care of the community, and how we respond to, to the pandemic. So, and also being a school committee member, a mother of former sports player, field hockey, and also somebody who loves sports. So I, I, I don't find myself in a position that I wish to be in, but it is, it is what it is. What we've been dealing with this week, especially from the Board of Health standpoint and from Director Hoffman, interim Director Hoffman's standpoint, is a very rapid, very significant rise in COVID-19 cases within our community. It is not, it is not confined to nursing homes, or a single family here, or a single family there. It is within the community. As of today, our contact tracers and our Board of Health and our, the people involved are working up, when I say that working up piece, more than 100 people. These are people that they know of in the community, who may or may not have COVID, may or may not have been tested. But that is the level of which we are dealing with this very unusual, for the city of Greenfield, spike in COVID cases. And it does fall on the heels of Thanksgiving. For specifics, as of today, so from Monday to today, we have 39 new cases. So that's 39 new positives. Monday, it was 10. Tuesday, it was 11. Yesterday, it was 18. We will not have tomorrow's numbers until tomorrow. So when they make this kind of a decision, they make it with the expressed intention of keeping all of you safe, all of the students, all of the parents, all of their families, all of their friends. So don't think they made that statement lightly. They are parents, their children are older, with the exception of Ms. Hoffman. They understand. So I hope that we can have a rational discussion about, if, if you wish, about their recommendation as you go about making your decision this evening. And I think, I think that's enough for now, and I will text Jennifer and see if she can come on.
Thank you, Mayor Weidergardner. I appreciate that. So I've got, I know I saw Member Holland's hand, and I also see Member Ekstrom's hand. Let's do it in that order for questions.
I have two questions. One has to do with the ice hockey rink, which I don't think belongs to the school district. And my question is, we have a unique relationship, because I think it is not a school district property. So my question about that is, what is our role in whether or not that facility stays open and functioning? And my second question is to the athletic director. If, if the sports were to continue, that was our decision in some way and form, what shape, what is the, um, protocol going to be should someone on the team test positive for COVID in either ice hockey or basketball? What would happen then?
Okay, so it sounds like maybe, Mike, both those questions, can you do both of those?
Sure. First one, I, I'm not sure, but the ice hockey rink is owned by FMC, which is a private entity out of Boston, so it is not controlled by the school. It has not done, it's not town property at all. It's a separate entity. We have nothing to do with that. We rent ice from them. So that, that's the only tie-in that we have. Our, our kids practice there, and we rent ice and play games from there. And then the second question was pertaining protocol. Talking to our school nurse briefly when we were doing this last week, is that if a case came across our team, that team would be shut down for 14 days.
Thank you. Superintendent Harper, would you add anything to that piece?
Sure. Just that we would also follow contract tracing as appropriate, and... Sure. Just that we would also follow contract tracing as appropriate and report to the Department of Education if there are school-related cases and continue to refer to medical professionals and do that sort of referral to primary care and medical professionals that we have been doing. Our lead nurse has been involved in that heavily when people have questions and so forth and that. Those are established protocols that Coach K was just talking about.
That's the educated version right there. I just say shut down for 14 days.
All good. They're both important. Member Extrem, go ahead.
Mayor, you had said phase, that the health, Board of Health is recommending or wants us to return to phase two, step one?
Phase three, step one.
So I just want to make sure because you had said phase two. I was like, that's way different than what we're talking about.
No, I, I don't know if I said that or not, but I, I read from the letter.
Yeah, no, it's fine. And so the only, I mean, I absolutely am pro our teams getting back together and the, the endorphins that are released when people are, are active and the goodness from their mental health, the stress and anxiety release. I mean, I can't say enough things about sports and just overall health and well-being that are important. But as I'm reading through the, let's see, so COVID-19 order number 57, superseding and rescinding order number 54, that has been released about now that we're in phase three, stage one, for, and you can all read through this and it's boring, but I promise you'll fall asleep. Events, gatherings at event venues and in public settings. Indoor gatherings at event venues or in public settings are limited to a maximum of 25 people. So when I think about, so let's say there was some competition and, and I heard you, Coach, saying that you didn't think there could be any competitive games or anything like that. And I don't know the numbers on hockey, so I don't want to get into that. But just off the top of my head, for basketball, there'd be two coaches per team, that's four. There'd be two refs, that's six. Somebody running the scoreboard and all that stuff, that's seven. Plus 12 people per team, that gets you around 31 people in a building. And that, as a direct result of what this order is saying, is not something that can be done. Skills and drills, I think is a great idea and I can, I would absolutely endorse doing skills and drills and readdressing this at a later time.
So can I answer that question for 25?
Yeah, go ahead.
We're limiting our rosters to 10 and it's the playing floor itself for 25. So it's 10 on each team, two referees and two score people.
10 on each team, meaning 10?
20 and then two referees is 22. And then one coach on each team is 24 and then there's four people. So we thought about that too with the 25 and then it went out the window when we thought phase three, step two came. And now we're back to step one with the, but with the October modifications, it, it's a little different about that. So that, that's why we're waiting for more modifications to come from the EEA, which are coming tomorrow or Friday.
Okay.
So we did plan on, the MIA has now since, they had a board of directors meeting today that cut rosters down and we in the PVIC are even cutting them down even more. But we're, we're believing that that was the floor. But that was before step two.
Yeah. I mean, this is, and because I did, I guess the floor previously, I get that, but this is maximum. That's it.
And it wouldn't, we, we wouldn't have any fans, so it wouldn't be any more than that.
Yeah. Okay. And when you say Western Mass teams, can I ask one more question, Amy? Is that all right?
Of course. Yeah.
So when you say Western Mass teams, and this is me being crazy and I know that, but when you, so places like Chicopee and Holyoke and Springfield are having real explosions. And so I get a little freaked out about that. My, I don't have anyone who's playing sports and I, but I totally understand that. And so, you know, I will address it again later. But if we're doing skills and drills, let's do that.
So to answer that question, basketball would only play in the Franton County bubble. We're only going to be playing like we did in field hockey. Ice hockey would be playing at five different ranks, which have been playing since August. With the protocols that FMC has put forth, they're, they're amazing. There's no crossing. People go in one door and exit out another door, one at a time. They can't go in until the kids are on the ice. The kids have separate areas to put their skates on, away from everybody. And at timely fashions, they are exiting the building and away from each other and going right to their cars. And there's no conjugating or anything like that in, in the parking lots. Those ranks are, go ahead.
Are hockey teams limited themselves so that they don't go beyond the 25 people in a building?
In each rink, it is, no, I don't believe so. And it's only, it's only on the ice. It's not in the building itself from what I've been, from what I've been told. And with, on the benches, they are, they are on the benches six feet apart because you can take, at our rink, you can take the doors out and they have chairs. So they're always separated throughout the, the rink and never sitting right next to each other, especially for more than, you know, five minutes because in the game of hockey, in the game of hockey, you're not having any more contact than 10 seconds with a kid. So it's a fast-moving game. So the, the 25 rule is basically only on the floor itself.
I don't know. Not that I'm anti by any means, but it says in public settings, limited 25. This is Member Karen. I'd like to speak whenever. Go ahead, Susan.
Go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, Katie. I'm all set.
And Member Extrem, I'm going to have you moderate for a bit. Okay.
You got it.
Okay. If I could maybe jump in just ahead of Member Karen.
Are you okay with that?
It's an explanation of phase three, step one, what's, what's allowed for high-risk sports.
Sure.
Okay. So.
Thanks, Katie.
If I'm reading phase three, step one correctly, and I think I am, for high-risk sports, they are able to participate in level one, which is individual or socially distanced group activities such as individual skill work and drills. The rest of the guideline says level two and level three play are, are allowed only if the minimum mandatory standards for modification to play are met. I'm not going to read you all those minimum mandatories, but they are in that document that was sent to you. But level two is competitive practices, inter-team group games, contact drills and scrimmages. And level three is competitions, inter-team games, meets, matches and races.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Katie.
Okay. So I want to ask a couple of quick questions to Mike. Something that hasn't been mentioned yet is that the kids, I believe, will be wearing masks the entire game, not taking them off. They wear them the whole time. I believe that I'm right about that. And I want to clarify, Mike, you think that it means 25 people participating in the event, not necessarily 25 people in the building?
I don't believe it's in the building. I believe it's on the, the playing surface.
Okay. And but in your proposal to us is that we would have no spectators. It would only be the people participating in the event that are in the building. Okay. And um, hold on, I'll circle back, get my brain around there. So I'm hearing that the interpretation from the mayor and the Board of Health of phase three, step one means, sounds like they are interpreting it to mean only skills and drills. But I know that across the state, many associations are running basketball and hockey. So I'm trying to figure out where the breakdown in our understanding of that is.
So I can kind of answer that because there was a document from the EEA that was put out in October, the, the August document that the mayor has in her hand, I believe, and I might be wrong in saying that, has been revised on October 5th, that states that high-risk sports in level three, phase three, level one, may, may participate in competitions with modifications. And what the COVID task force of the MIA and the EA did was make those modifications. So there's certain modification and school, in the sports committees of the MIA, made the modifications to allow, to, to be able to do those competitions. And that's, I, I don't have that document in front of me. It's on the EA October 5th or 2nd revision. And that, that's how I believe the, those other teams that are going to be starting on Monday are playing.
Those, those EAA guidelines are approved by the governor, like they're submitted to him or like it's not, I'm trying to under, sorry.
So I don't, I don't believe that, I don't, no, this, again, I'm, I'm not.
Yeah, yeah.
Not sure. But the EA guidelines are put out for the, the governor to look at. I don't, I don't think the governor is writing them. Those are guidelines that the MIA is using to be able to put forth their athletics on, on the fields. So I, I know back when this was phase three, step two, when we got the November modifications, when we went to that, we were all excited because those phase three, step two, we were allowed to play football and in those modifications. And so we, we didn't, of course, because we were, we only did skills and drills from phase three, level one. But in the same modification of October, we were then allowed to be able to have smaller, larger cohorts because with the modifications that we put forth of washing the hands, masks, distancing, that we were then allowed to do another step of, of the sport. So that's kind of the same thing that we're asking here is that, yes, we did go, go back to phase, phase three, step one, but the modifications that were put forth allows us to be able to play in competitions. And I guess all I'm asking for is, is if we can revisit this when the new EA guidelines come out, that we, I mean, we got to get the kids to competition. But I, I mean, we want to do skills and drills, of course, to get them to do something. But we, you know, especially on the ice hockey rink, that we have to have some competition because we're not going to spend all that money to be able to do skills and drills when the kids are going to do it anyways at their clubs. So.
Yeah, that's really important. I'm going to ask one more question. I'm sorry for monopolizing Coach K here. If we as a school committee tonight voted to get back to you with more, after the guidelines, we get another vote, we call a quick meeting. I mean, we're meeting very regularly anyway. Could we, if we gave you a go-ahead for, say, just skills and drills tonight, just to get them moving, get the word out there, get it going, and then you could come back to us with the new guidelines, do you think that would be worthwhile for us to do for you? Or would it be better if we have a true, solid vote for competition and then roll back to only skills and drills? I'm trying to figure out what would make the most sense.
So the most sense is, I just got an email from the EA, from the latest guidelines. The most sense would be able to get something. Now, we're not talking, we're not talking about anything until January 4th start, possibly January 11th now. And so I'd like to be able just to have somebody vote on something to say, yes, we support you in doing the skills and drills with the possibility of having competitions as the metrics go down. I mean, does that make sense?
Yes.
I mean, the way things are going, you know, I get kind of nervous that they're not going down. But, you know, I think time is going to help us out in this, in this sense.
Okay. Swear to God, it's my last question. Thank you, Susan. I'm sorry. So you said, I'm sorry, you said that we wouldn't start anything till January 4th, or we would start skills and drills sooner and then competition couldn't start till January 4th?
No, January, right now, right now, the PVIC start date is January 4th for all sports. And then 10 days after that, competitions would happen January 14th and end on February 22nd.
Oh, wait.
So, so that is right now in the process of being talked about. And, oh boy. So I got a wicked long document. Well, I'm going to have to break that down. But as, as I look at it, the new EA guidelines just came out and it looked like the high-risk sports are separated into different, different levels. Ice hockey, basketball and ice hockey are considered high-risk, but can participate in level one, two and three. So we're going to ask for competition then for your vote tonight. Because the latest EA guidelines state that we are asking for level one, two and three competition to happen January 4th, if not January 11th.
Let's just wait 10 minutes and see if any new policies come out.
Just, just came off the hot. Somebody just sent it to me.
So I want to, I want to be clear that when we're talking about the phase one or phase three, is it second, I don't know, step three, phase one or phase three, step one, whatever it is, the parameters being sent, set are not the parameters that the school committee is setting. These are state parameters that whether you're a club or a public space, you have to adhere to. If not, the Board of Health will come in and close you up.
Correct.
And we're talking about clubs being open regardless of what the school committee decides. If the school committee says, hey, we're going to do what the law says and if it's over 25 and I, we have different interpretations, or whatever it is that, that finds out, 25 on the floor, 25 in the building, whatever it is. If the state says you can or can't do that, then we can or can't do that. And it's the same for everyone else. That has nothing to do with our thoughts. And.
But as Mrs. Miss Hoffman said elegantly, is that she said that they can not be more lenient, they can always do more for safety of our students. And I agree with that. That's what should happen.
Can I just interject a minute and say that Chair, that interim director Hoffman is on the call and she is willing to ask, answer any of your questions or make any statements related to whatever she just heard? Because I don't know exactly when she got on.
It could be.
Whenever you're ready to recognize her. And Mike, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I, I felt it was important that you know that.
She has been raising her hand. Yeah. Welcome. Glad you're here.
Thank you. Please speak. Hi, everyone. Thank you for inviting me tonight. I am here to represent the Board of Health. My name's Jennifer Hoffman. I'm the interim health director for the city of Greenfield. So the new guidelines came out and of course, the health department did not have time to review the new guidelines that just came out, Mike. So we have to look at that. The health department was informed of all these discussions pretty much last Friday. And the health department had to rush and look through all the state guidelines. And then there was a rollback yesterday and we had to have another meeting. So the main issue is, is the Board of Health does want sports and we do care about the youth of our community. And we understand the psychological impact that not having sports and interaction with other children has. The whole thing that we care about is the safety of our community and not just with children, but with people of all different age groups. So our concern was, and, and we're not saying no, we're saying skills and drills, we want kids to play at this point. We are saying that we are, we're meeting Saturday morning at 10 o'clock in another Zoom meeting to go over any other new guidelines that come out. We're also looking at the metrics very carefully in the city of Greenfield. They are going up exponentially. And I think that needs to be considered. I think that January 4th is a great thought, but that's right after Christmas. And these numbers have jumped up dramatically after Thanksgiving. And I don't even want to think about after Christmas and New Year's. So I think we need to really consider that. The spread of this disease is widespread now. There is, you know, no control in the community. I think that children playing are great. Most of the disease transmission has happened through hockey and that's why hockey was halted for a period of time and had to get stricter guidelines on how hockey rinks are managed. I think that that needs to be considered. And even though there's new standards for hockey rinks and everything's being followed appropriately, we have to keep in mind that it only takes one slip-up. We see that in hospitals, we see that in nursing homes, and we could absolutely see that in a hockey rink. I know that kids go home to their mothers, fathers, little brothers, little sisters, grandmothers, grandfathers. We don't know who's vulnerable next to you, next to me. And we need to keep that in mind. The health department and the, and public health is for the greater good, not just one group. So when I look at these standards and when my health department looks at these standards, we think of everybody. So yes, indeed, we want the children to play and we do want everyone to be happy and be athletic and have a great psychological outlook during this pandemic. But it's also, as the interim health. But it's also as the interim health director and representing the city of Greenfield is to keep the whole city safe. So we are, we are going to review these new guidelines, Mike, that just came out. Within 15 minutes ago, and I will make sure I look it up and I will hand it to the Chair Nancy Burshak. And the rest of my board. And we will review it Saturday morning, and we will also review the metrics as they come. Uh, I don't feel hopeful that the numbers are going to drop by Saturday. But one could wish. So I don't have many answers to questions. Um. Okay, I saw your chat. Um. But I could try to answer.
Let me interrupt you. Let me interrupt you just for one second. If anyone is using the chat. That is not an appropriate use of the chat during a school committee meeting. We will not acknowledge those comments. Public comment is at the beginning of the meeting, and that's it. So I'm sorry to interrupt you. Go ahead.
No, I I think I'm done.
So.
Thank you.
I just got another email stating that that wasn't the that was the latest E A's. So the E A, the latest E A's haven't come out yet, so I misspoke.
Okay.
Somebody was getting all. All in a tizzy and sending me things. Sorry.
I have one more thing to say. I'm sorry.
Please, go ahead.
I I received. Um, and I and I actually said to Jordana to please have any parent write letters. And I've had parents write, just so you know, for and against. Sports, so I've had a big outcry of how everyone wants sports, but I wanted, I just wanted to be known that there are people that are concerned also. So it's, you know, so I just need everyone to be aware um that there are two sides. And the health department, like I said, does care about the well being of our youth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, do we have a motion on the table? Are we still just discussing?
Just discussing.
I have a quick question, Member Karen. That's fine. You that we are, we are not clearly done with questions. I see lots of hands. Go ahead, please. Um, uh, I find it, I'm really. First of all, it is very clear to me that the Board of Health does truly care about this our community. I hear you. I see you. I absolutely believe that is true. Um, I do have a question. I'm interested. I know you can't really reveal, but I would like to maybe have a percentage because as a school committee, we've received no email about not running sports. Nothing. It's like a blank slate. So I would be interested to hear just a number, a percentage, I don't know, something. If you could, I don't know what the rules are on that, but something just if you could, um, Ms. Hoffman, just say to tell me, yeah, I've received four versus 20. Not that I should, to be clear, I don't think we should be taking, it's not one of those things that's necessarily a majority vote of people. But uh we have not received any negative emails.
Understood. Obviously, there was a much larger outcry of having sports than people saying no sports. So I mean, it was not zero, but it was not 10.
Very much. It was really important to hear what you had to say, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Member Karen. Um, I see a hand from Member Hollins. And I don't have everyone on my screen, and then Member Johnson Musad.
Uh, this is what I understand, and maybe someone will correct me if I'm wrong. I understand that. Uh, at the moment, the school committee has taken no position on winter sports, although I've received letters criticizing our position. I'm not aware we've taken one. I understand that we must vote something. Or no winter sport activity can take place, and we have to make that decision before. January 1. I've never seen that written down, but that's my understanding that we must take some action before January 1. And I understand that no matter what we decide, we're in a very fluid situation like waves. Uh, you had a period of calm, and then we're going to get different guidance and rulings uh every few days because that's what's going on. So whatever our decision is, it can't be, in my opinion, fixed. It's got to be fluid. So that the district can carry on. Uh, according to whatever guidelines flow in during the winter season. That's my question about the January 1 date that we must make a decision. And my thought that if we do, it needs to be fluid enough that the superintendent. Can uh address changing. Directives, state directives. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Member Johnson Musad, go ahead.
I I'd just like to thank everyone who's come to to present and answer our questions and appreciating the. The level of thought that um everyone's applying to these questions. Um. Jennifer, I I um wanted to ask some questions that are kind of based on some of the things we heard in the public comment. Because I I think I heard some things that may not actually be true in terms of just basic public health guidance around uh COVID that I think. Might be important for us to clarify, so. My understanding is that young people absolutely can be infected with COVID and suffer negative health consequences from it. That's true, isn't it?
Um, yes, um, as a matter of fact, there in the summer, there were, um, I'm not remembering the name, but it was a. Children were getting specific arthritis disorders from COVID, um, and they have chronic long term effects. They're saying that young, young children aren't really carrying it, but we're still seeing it in young children. We're seeing it in all ages right now. It's not just affecting uh 18 to 26 year olds, even though that's the highest uh risk group that's affected at this time.
Great, thanks. And and so and the concern, I mean, first of all, young people can be infected and affected, but also. They can also be vectors of transmission to adults, including people who are at higher risk. That's right, isn't it?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, so so when we make these decisions, I mean, it's 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 terrible because we may be. Uh, forcing sacrifices from um young people that can never be replaced. I mean, they'll never get the chance to play that season again or get that score. But it's to protect them, them, yes, and also um the community at large. Um. I guess um. The other thing is one of the the things I heard was that if we don't allow it here in this. If we if we have looser um guidelines here in this school system. I mean, if we have more strict restrictions here in this school system, people will just go elsewhere and do things that are uh perhaps. In places that have looser restrictions. I I would, I'm not sure that that's necessarily true. I know there's some some evidence in. Uh, the field of alcohol prevention that when we have strict policies around alcohol, it doesn't actually. Cause young people just to go and consume alcohol in greater quantities elsewhere. Strict policies, so. I guess just the the communication of 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 um restrictions and the reasons why. Does have an impact on young people and the choices they make, so I wouldn't necessarily assume that if we went with stricter restrictions in Greenfield. That they would go and do riskier things elsewhere. Um. My other question, Ms. Hoffman, is. Um, the Board of Health has pretty uh strong powers in public health emergencies. And so one question I have is how much of this power really rests with us as a school committee? Or how much could the Board of Health just say this is how it's gonna be?
The Board of Health could only make recommendations.
Okay. Great, thank you. That's very helpful.
Member Karen, I have a couple of comments. And maybe a motion. Um, so to what Glenn was saying, um, yes, you know, we can't, some kids are going to make riskier choices. But they, if we do not play high school hockey or basketball, they will play on other teams. That is already happening. The other teams have offered to continue running all the way through the winter. Normally, they would end when the high school season starts, but they've already decided, they've already announced to their players that if the high school seasons don't start. They will continue to play, and these kids are going to Boston and back. I'm not saying that should necessarily affect our decision, it's just the reality of the conversation. Um. The, there was a, the, we did have to shut hockey down for two weeks. And one of the really important parts of that was where the cases that came from hockey were actually found. And I'm not a health expert. Um. I did quite a bit of research last night. I reached out to some people trying to find more information. Um, they actually, one of the main reasons that it got shut down was because people were refusing to allow contact tracing to happen. Not necessarily because of cases. Someone already spoke to it in public comment, but the governor made a task force. That looked into why all of these cases were happening. And the main cause was tournament play and out of state play, which has now been banned. And also that the cases were coming from people hanging out in the parking lot, not the kids on the ice. Um, it was that people were continuing. Now, we cannot control the parking lot regardless of we run a season or not. I'm not saying we should. We can try. That's what we're gonna try, and by not having spectators at games. We are allowing the parking lot situation to kind of disappear because they're not there to stand around talking to each other. Um, the kids on the ice or on the basketball court are wearing masks the entire time. And so it does change that. Um. I I hear the, I hear the reality of our community transmission. I do hear it. Uh, I do want to be clear that I hear that. Um. I don't know if we're in a place for a motion. Um, I guess I could try and see how that goes.
Could I just make a comment about something you just said?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, um. I just want to be clear that. Even if it was spread from the parents and spectators in the parking lot. Those parents and spectators go home with their children. And then their children get it and spread it to the team and grandma and grandpa, and I could keep going on. So I really don't care where it begins. The point is, is it begins somewhere and then it spreads. And that's something we need to consider. I don't care if it happened on the rink, if it happened outside, if it happened at the Big Y. The point is, is it happens, and then the kids get it and spread it to others. And we need to remember that.
Thank you.
You are right.
Thank you. Um, it seems like I've got a couple of members who are interested in trying to make a motion, which I always appreciate before we do discussion. Sometimes, as in this case, we make a little bit of a um leeway for discussion first, but. Um. Who's ready to try making a motion? Uh, Member Extrem, and then we'll try Member Hollins. Yeah.
Well, I actually, I want to go back to Coach. Um, you had said that you were looking for us to approve starting competitions on January 4th, and then you said you got a different email. What are you asking for at this point?
So right now, I would like to start skills and drills on January 4th and competition on January 14th. It possibly could move skills and drills to January 11th and then 10 days after that competition. Waiting on that.
And I I did have a question, but I think it can wait until after the motion, so thank you for clarifying that. Um, who wants to try a motion? Was it you, Member Hollins, who want to try a motion? Try. You're on mute.
I'll try to give a fluid. Controlled motion.
Sure.
Um. Notwithstanding a state directive to the contrary. To support a safely designed skills and drills winter sports program. With competitions as can be allowed within safe guidelines, decisions overseen by the superintendent.
Okay, uh, and uh Susan Farber, want to make sure you have what you need?
I I sent it.
Member Hollis can repeat it, please.
Um.
Can you repeat it?
I wrote it out for you in chat. I'll repeat it.
Excellent. Thank you. No, if it's in chat, that's perfect. Thank you.
It's not in the chat.
I just sent it to Susan Farber.
Oh, great, thank you. Okay, um, and do I have a second for that?
Second.
That was Member Karen with the second, and let's have some further discussion. Uh, I did have a a question and.
The superintendent.
Oh.
The Chair, the Chair can begin. I'll I'll wait after the Chair's question.
Okay, it it's related, I mean, and maybe there are not even people here who can answer this. I'm confused about the F M C ownership of the hockey rink. And they're private, and it's private, so they have different rules, but. Everything I've read since yesterday about these changes, the the rollback to to step one of phase three. Indicates that hockey rinks should be closed. Is it because they're private? Do they have different rules? Am I misinterpreting that? What? Yeah, Mike, go ahead.
So the there, it's not because they're private, it's because the mass hockey rules have come out. And and there was a directive that came from mass hockey, and they run under the mass hockey guidelines of all the modifications. That are put forth through the game itself, they're allowed to play. That's the what's we got for emails about mass hockey, and it's the same for um all the other sports that they're considering. Back in the day when this all first started. There there was no hockey allowed until modifications came in that said stated no checking. Players have to have face masks. They came and made that proposal. E A then comes back and revises their stuff and said, okay, you can do this. So they did that. Then there was another revision. Okay, now everybody's got to have masks on. So there's been three or four different revisions to phase three step one over the course of the last four months.
Okay.
So the latest one was October 2nd, and that that's kind of where the guidelines fall now from what the governor did, as far as I can tell.
Okay, thank you.
Regardless, the Governor. Indicates what override whatever the E A or E A, whatever it is, dictates, correct? Regardless.
Right, and he's rolled back from phase three to step one, October 2nd guideline, which states phase three high risk sports can play with modifications.
But that was phase, but that is step two.
No, step two is full.
Step two is full.
Step two was everything else. Phase phase three, step one, October 5th modifications. With with modifications, level three can play.
Yeah, they've there, yeah, there's more of that story. Okay.
But again, this could be a mute point tomorrow or Friday. Two E A guidelines could come out, so I would just like to be able to give a vote, an affirmative, to be able to say, okay. Give these people an opportunity that let's either do January 4 skills and drills or January 11 skills and drills with competition afterwards. And then revisit it when the time comes if the guideline state for the state that we can't do it, we can't do it.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, Superintendent Harper, please, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just, um, I'm hearing from Coach K that what he needs is to go ahead to plan skills and drills for January, whether that's January 4th or 11th. Um, I do want to say that, you know, we heard it from Member Hollins, uh, we heard it from our interim health director. This is a very fluid situation, so a state directive could very well change what the committee votes on tonight. But so too could changing COVID numbers in our community or a new Board of Health decision. The Board of Health could say, you know, everything is looking peaty keen and and things could start back up. So I I think it's a little overly restrictive that it's only um sort of notwithstanding a state directive. And I do think you want to be able to take into consideration the local guidance and the local numbers. Um, as we're all seeing, that's, this is about our community, our students, our parents. Um, and I think what he needs is the go ahead to start with skills and drills, knowing that we all want to do more than that as soon as it's safe.
Thank you for that. Other questions, discussion, Member Hollins, is that a hand? Yep.
The reason, the reason I started the motion with not withstanding a state directive to the contrary is there may be a state directive where it doesn't matter what anyone locally thinks. And the reason I ended it with decisions overseen by the superintendent is because I know there's a lot of concern. About local directives and local numbers and everything, and I don't think it's possible for the school committee. To keep weighing and reviewing that, and I think the superintendent is highly. In touch with all these issues and will oversee careful governance at the local level for our school district, so. That's why I started it and ended it with um. What we can't control and the superintendent overseeing what we must address, so I'm I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
Personally.
Other comments or questions about the motion? Or any further discussion?
Uh, I have, I have, I guess, yeah, I have some more discussion and questions, I guess.
Sure, sure.
Um, I guess first, uh, I wanted to check in with the coach and with um. With uh the superintendent, whether that motion sounds like it gives you what you need.
Not exactly. I think it's a bit, a bit restrictive.
Yes, it is restricted. It, I mean, my original proposal was to start, you know, practice on January 4th. And then play uh our 10 games within our community bubble. Um, and have middle schoolers also in, and you know, again, that was, that was the high and mighty, but you know. But, you know, now I want to get what we can get for, uh, JV and varsity programs. And, um, you know, with the skills and drills to start and then go into competition is the best way to see that.
That's what the motion allows, just to clarify.
I do think, I do think the motion allows that. Um, can, can either of you indicate what would make it less restrictive? Either the superintendent or Coach K?
Well, I mean, it's less restrictive because, um, I, I believe in the proposal, I did talk about having fans. I did talk about having, um, um, what was it? More people on the bench. And we would have to, we have to cut that down. It was also, uh, middle school participation was also on there too, the original proposal, but I'm not asking for that now.
So in terms of the motion that's on the table for the school committee to vote on right now, would you, um, are you comfortable with that? Or would you, um, are you looking for something else from, from us in terms of a vote?
I'm just looking for varsity and JV basketball and hockey participation in skills and drills and competitions when time allows.
Yeah. So that's what the motion has. Okay. And Superintendent Harper, was there something you felt like was too restrictive?
Sure. I, I mean, I think I've already stated that, uh, the only exception here is state directives and not any changes in our local data. That's of some concern to me. And I'm not sure that, um, there is a precedent for this decision to be overseen by the superintendent. We have enacted all of these decisions coming back to the committee. I, I think you've heard it from Coach K and Director Hoffman, that it would be appropriate to revisit this if the data changes or if the governor releases something new. I think the, Coach K needs to, to be able to begin. So we can give a go ahead for January, knowing that it's, it's fluid. And if something changes, that we'll revisit it. Um, knowing the number of public comments that were made and the extensive community involvement, I personally would be uncomfortable if this decision didn't ever come back to a public forum like this. And there was a decision made on, people felt that they didn't understand the process because it wasn't made in a, in a public meeting. Um, so I'm not personally comfortable pushing it into administration. I, I think this is an appropriate venue for the school committee to take up these issues.
Okay. Thank you. Yep. Go ahead, member Holland.
I have a question. If the motion says that the superintendent is overseeing this, isn't it within the superintendent's discretion in overseeing it to bring it back to the school committee? I mean, I don't know how detailed. I don't mind if the motion changes. I just don't know how detailed it can be for every little thing. It, the superintendent works with the chair on what comes to the school committee. And that's always part of overseeing everything, isn't it?
Oh, oh, how about offering a friendly amendment to the motion, uh, for the school committee to continue, continue to be involved in decision-making rather than the superintendent? Would you accept that friendly amendment? Okay. And Susan Farber, um, if you have what you need, we'll move forward with our discussion.
Just to clarify, we are striking decisions overseen by the superintendent?
Correct. In favor of deci- uh, decisions being referred back to the school committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have what I need.
Thank you. Uh, further discussion from the school committee or, uh, uh, Health Director Hoffman, Coach K, the, uh, superintendent, anyone?
I guess actually that, um, kind of came out of my, asking my first question. So if you don't mind, I can kind of pick up where it was.
And then the mayor, and then the mayor after you, member Jax Musad, go ahead.
And, you know, to be frank, like, I'm just really appreciating the opportunity to have Ms. Hoffman here. And so this question is, um, it's, it's connected to this issue we're deliberating, but it's a little bit broader as well. But, um, Representative Mindy Dom is, is, uh, pushing for, um, the state to do a better job in terms of contact tracing back to school systems. I guess there's some concern that the, the contact tracing that they're doing does not always show any transmission that may be happening within the school system. I just was wondering if you know anything about that and, um, I, whether you feel, like, for example, would you feel that if there was a transmission that happened at a sports event, that we would be able to trace it back? Or is there some, um, something, is the contact tracing not always adequate to pick that up if, if something is happening at a sporting event?
That's a really good question. Um, one of the things we had over the summer for baseball and softball and other hockey, I mean, I have hockey on the brain and other sports is, um, people had to basically sign, um, like a sign and sheet when they were asked the questions. Um, like if they have any fever, have they been around anybody? One of the things they would do is put in a sign and sheet and they would put the people that are at that game with them. So we would have a name and a phone number, um, at all times. If let's say, uh, Joe Smith became sick, we could look up Joe Smith's name and who was with him and start that way. Um, however, on that note, you know, uh, contact tracing is only as good as the information we get and how compliant the people are that work with us. So if someone is not going to be compliant with giving us information or someone's not going to follow quarantine, there's not much we can do. Um, except maybe, um, with, with some help, we can get enforcement from the police and, and maybe a fine. Um, so as for your question, if we have, um, sheets saying who's at the game, who's at the event, a, a way to contact the people, like a phone number, um, that really does help us narrow it down saying, hey, were you around Joe Smith? How long were you around Joe Smith? And so on and so forth. When it comes to schools and contact tracing, that's a little bit different. Um, because there's age requirements and information about passing on people's medical information. And plus also considering not causing a panic among other parents and, and teachers and so on and so forth. So we have actually a, a pretty set guideline in Greenfield about what is done when, um, someone is sick. Um, as for other schools in the area, um, I mean, the nurses work very hard and they basically reach with, they speak with the local health departments in their area and work closely with the public health nurse and try to keep that information. We let the people that need to know, know. Um, but it's not everybody's business to know if you're sick, just like if someone's HIV positive. It's not everyone's business to know if you're HIV positive. There's a right to privacy. Um, so, um, I hope I answered your question.
Yes, thank you very much.
Well, did you have any more questions? Were you, were you done?
So can I follow up on that?
Oh, sure. Coach K, go ahead.
So off fall, we did do that. Um, when we had competitions with field hockey, each team would bring in a roster of the kids who were there. Um, we had COVID coaches that would take temperatures of both teams, ask them all the questions and have everybody written down who was there. So, um, we have that filed. Well, not fall anymore. We got rid of it, but we would have that held on to for the whole few weeks or what have you. Um, and documented everybody that was there. When we had fans, we, we did allow that fans at the last couple of games. They had to sign in, um, and what kid they were with. So we had documentation that way. Um, we didn't ask for any phone numbers because we felt that that was a little bit too, too, um, personal, but we knew who they were because they were our fans and we could easily get a hold of them. So we did have, we, we are doing that. And that was one of the things that we will be doing is roster exchanges to make sure who's there and what have you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor Rita Gardner, please. Go ahead.
You're on mute. Um, now I'm off. Um, I just, I know, I think, I, I think, um, uh, Mike, um, you did state that you were looking for competitions within our community bubble. Am I, am I clear? Am I correct in what you said?
Yes.
Okay. I just, um, what concerns me about that, it's not, it's not so overly concerning that I can't, uh, consider this motion, uh, in its entirety. But what I just want to remind you that what, what both interim director Hoffman is saying and I am saying is that unfortunately that community bubble is getting very compromised with cases. So, um, let me try to understand it by asking you another question. Uh, who are you considering your community bubble and how would that literally play out, I guess?
So we would have an eight, nine game schedule, um, once, once we figure out who is going to be, um, allowed to play. And, uh, it would be Frank County teams plus Smith and Smith Academy and Hopkins Academy. They're, they're like sized teams. With everybody that is, that we consider in Frank County, all the way to Athol, all the way to Mohawk, Turner's Pioneer, Frank County Tech, there's 10, 10, 10 teams, nine games. We play each other once and that would take about four or five weeks.
Okay.
So I, I mean, and we would travel out of those, you know, four or five games with those teams.
And they would be coming into Greenfield as well.
Four or five games, boys and girls.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Further questions, comments, discussion? I'm not hearing anything. I think we are ready or for a vote. Um, does anyone from the school committee want the motion read before we move to the roll call vote?
Yes, please.
Yes. So Susan Farber, can you read the motion for us, please?
Yes. The motion is that notwithstanding a state directive to the contrary to support a safely designed skills and drills winter sports program with competitions as can be allowed within safe guidelines and for the school committee to continue to be involved in decision-making.
Thank you. And that's the obligatory cat through the screen.
Not a zoom until.
I'm blocking the speaker.
Would you, um, do a roll call vote?
May I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Sure.
It, I'm just trying to understand. I, I think I understand the intent of this. If numbers change significantly in Greenfield, um, with this current motion, I'm trying to understand what the impact would be. So, um, as I mentioned, if, let's say there's no change in state directive, but the numbers in Greenfield change significantly. Uh, is it the committee's intention that they would revisit that?
I think the motion leaves it open to revisit at any point that we're asked to revisit it. That's my interpretation. Anyone else want to, uh, say something different?
That was mine as well.
Yeah, I, um, I, I think that's correct. I guess what troubles me a little bit about the motion is that there's no date attached to when you would want to begin competitions. I think I heard you say January 11th or 14.
Well, because they're waiting for updated state guidance. Is that right?
So the PBIC has, and the MIA has stated 10 days after the first date. So we're either going to start January 4th or January 11th. I, from my meeting this afternoon with the DAC, I feel that will probably be pushed to January 11th would be a start date and January 21st would be a competition date.
Any further clarification? Member Holland, you're on mute. Go ahead.
Um, I could be wrong. I just don't see where the school committee motion should have that level of detail if it gives a go ahead for safe programs.
From Brady or from another dog?
Hold on. If you're listening in, you gotta be on mute. I don't know who that is. There we go. Hang on.
You can mute them all.
I, yeah, I, I can't mute them all because then I mute you and everyone else.
I can unmute.
I believe once we make this motion, it goes into effect as soon as we vote. So today is early December. Anytime from now until winter season, we are authorizing a safely designed program within state guidelines.
So I'll just reiterate my concern and then the committee is free to vote. This is not something that I can vote on, as you know. Um, to me, the phrase safe guideline is very vague. We've heard from a lot of people tonight talking about their opinion of what is safe. Um, we have the board of health and the health director weighing in, and yet there's still a lot of discussion about what constitutes safety. So my, my advice on this is that it's going to invite this type of discussion again, um, on an ongoing basis. It doesn't tie it to any particular authority of our board of health or our COVID data, or even who is the decision-making authority. Um, personally, I, I would recommend that you get a little clearer about what constitutes safety or that you revisit, um, there's some trigger about when you might, um, revisit this. There's a lot of background. I apologize. Um, I'm happy to bring this back forward, but it, this motion does not make it clear to me if the committee is asking me or the board of health or someone else to bring information back, or if that's on the athletic director. I just want to say that, um, I think there's a lot of public interest in this. We all want our kids to play as soon as it is safe. The question is, what does it mean to be safe? All right. As a country, we're struggling with that. And, um, certainly Greenfield is part of that as well. So I think a little clarity might just be helpful to the community listening in about what does that mean? Does that mean we're going ahead with competitions? Does it mean we're revisiting it, uh, with the new state data in a couple of days or somewhere in between?
I appreciate that. In, in, in my view of this, I think that the way we've approached it allows us to revisit it anytime we want and to respond, uh, as appropriate when it's brought to our attention by the superintendent, by the athletic director, by the board of health, by the health director, by the mayor. Um, we are in a position where, um, we're being asked to say yes or no to something that none of us know exactly how it's going to unfold. And as Coach K so eloquently put it, this could all be out the window, um, in a day or two or in, in a week uh, because of different guidelines and certainly because of different numbers. Um, I am not comfortable with the school committee being tied to, um, certain trigger points when we've left it open that we can, we can revisit it at any time and we're meeting every two weeks. That should, I think, be responsive enough. Um, Coach K, please. You're on mute.
Uh, sorry. I thought I was, um, to get over this hump, whenever something comes out, I'd be glad to send it to everybody. When there's a new, new guideline that comes out that pertains to athletics, I'll send it. Um, and, and you can make the decisions of what you want to do with it. I mean, um, it's not, um, I mean, it's going to be out there and I can just send it.
Well, that's, and, and we appreciate more information is, is certainly going to be better in this situation. What we also clearly need, I tried to make heads or tails of all of this stuff. I heard news reports from three different, uh, sources about what was closed and what was open in the past 24 hours. And I couldn't follow it. Um, and even, you know, as your, 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 uh, proposal that you prepared for us that was great was out the window before we even got to vote on it. Um, and, you know, I think, I think to, to, uh, be able to revisit, knowing that we're meeting at least every 14 days, um, the, an open-ended motion feels, feels okay to me, but that's the personal opinion. Um, Mayor Rita Gardner, did you want to speak?
Uh, no, no.
Okay. Member Holland, go ahead.
I just have one last comment. I've heard some, I don't think anybody knows what's safe, how it's transmitted, what the effect is, who gets it, who carries it, who's, I, I just think, uh, no, nobody in the world seems to have the final decision on any of this. What I think we could do, in addition to a broad, fluid motion based on a lot of detail, I've heard tonight, like the role of our local health department, that we absolutely have provisions for quarantining and tracing, that everybody will wear a mask. There was just a lot of detail about how we're going to structure whatever we do. We could ask that there be a regulation, uh, for any kind of sports activity in the district and put all those very specific pieces together that we know would be followed. But our motions, it's really hard to have motions with that specificity. I agree with you. In a situation where nobody can define anything really, but I, I don't disagree with the superintendent. I think all of that would maybe best fit into a regulation that guides whatever is happening.
Chair Prowlady?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I call the question.
The mayor has called the question. We move to a roll call vote. Member Johnson Musad, please.
The roll call vote is on whether to call the question. So a yes is we're gonna, we're gonna answer this question now and start discussing. Okay. Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a no. Chair Poiroti?
Yes.
Number Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergardner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. So we will call the question. We will move to a, we will end discussion and we will move to a vote on the original motion.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Poiroti?
Yes.
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergardner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all for all your hard work. Uh, thank you to, uh, uh, Health Director Hoffman for joining us and answering so many questions. I know it was late notice and I appreciate it. It sounds like we'll become fast friends very soon.
We meet every Thursday. We can, uh, we can keep you updated.
We'll do our best to accommodate and Coach will do our best to accommodate when, when and if you need to return back to school committee meeting, we'll do like we did and do it all at the beginning. Um, and lastly, I, I want to thank everyone who has listening in and participating and sending comments and, um, helping us to, to make a decision. And it sounds like we haven't heard the end of it. So stay tuned. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes.
Health Director can go, go about her business now, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. Thank you, Health Director.
Okay. So we are going to go back into the agenda in order. Uh, we'll move back to item four, which was.
Vice Chair Ekstrom would like your attention. Chair Poiroti?
Oh, you are on mute. Go ahead. Hang on a second. Go ahead. You had a lot of echo. Go ahead.
Um, in the past, we have talked about ending our tabling things because we meet so often. If we have gotten past a certain point, I don't know if that's a discussion that we want to talk about. I don't know if it's even applicable. We have done that in the past.
Yes, I do not mind. You're welcome at any point that we are moving into another part of the agenda to make a motion to adjust the agenda as you would, uh, as is in your interest. Are you planning to do that now?
I am just reminding people that that is something we do have at an executive session to take care of. And, um, it's, I'm not, not that anything isn't important, but we are meeting so often. So perhaps there are things that we want to table. That being said, December, do we want to have another meeting? I don't know. I'm just saying.
Okay. Like I said, if you want to interject and make a change, please do so. Okay. So we're into committee reports. I, as the chairperson, do not have a report this evening. We'll move to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Harper, please, go ahead.
I would like to begin my report, if I might. Is it possible that everyone who's on the line, especially those that are calling in, could just make sure you're muted? There's just an awful lot of feedback on the line. It's hard to hear if you're speaking.
I think I fixed it. Everyone's on mute except for the school committee members.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate that. Um, I was actually wondering if we might begin, um, the superintendent's report, um, if it's appropriate to just take a moment of silence and acknowledge that we, uh, have lost longtime counsel to the Greenfield Public Schools with the passing of attorney Peter Smith, who has served the students and particularly the special education students, parents and community of Greenfield Public Schools for, um, many decades and with appreciation, um, to take a moment of silence. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I would like to begin my report by stating that with the committee's support, um, and vote, we entered phase two of our in-person learning last week, and I could not be more proud of our teachers. Uh, I'm very grateful to our principals who have been working really around the clock to prepare our buildings. Um, we were preparing for students coming back since we closed. Uh, it was a long stretch of time from last March to this December, and boy, was it good to see those little people back in the building. Some not so little from pre-K up through high school. And our students are spread out throughout our buildings. So our concentration of people in any part of our buildings is low. Our health and safety guidelines are in place. I would like to particularly thank Pam Owen, our lead nurse. She has absolutely been working tirelessly around the clock. We've heard quite a lot from our health department earlier today, but our school department, um, nurses have been heroes as well in coordination with the public health folks on the city side. And Pam in particular is very regularly in communication with me through nights and weekends, um, working with our facilities, maintenance, uh, folks, principals, special education department, transportation, food services. Everybody's working together to make, uh, that happen. It was really terrific to see those students back, and we wouldn't have that without the support of the parents. Uh, thank you to those of you that are in phase two. You've got a lot of phone calls. There's a lot of, uh, moving parts. I think you probably heard a lot of different, um, things as it evolved over time, and students have settled into a pretty good routine. So I really just want to celebrate that the goal that the school committee set has been met, and it was a very important marker, and we feel it is absolutely the right thing. So, um, uh, at our last meeting, I thank those that were on the negotiating committee for, um, making that a reality. And today I just want to acknowledge that that is in place and, um, to thank everybody that is making that happen, particularly our teachers and IAs in the building, um, that are doing such a terrific job with our students. Um, we have had, uh, changes in the COVID metrics, as you all have heard, and, um, we are continuing to keep a close eye on that to make sure that those students that are in our buildings are taken care of very well and that we're taking all appropriate precautions. When we receive new updated numbers from the state, um, late Thursday night last week, heading into Friday morning, they come out once, uh, they, they come out on Thursday evenings well past business hours, usually around eight or nine PM, and then we review and, um, take any appropriate actions. You heard from the health department that they were contacted last Friday as well, as an example. So we're taking precautions. We are upgrading some of our filters. We are installing new HEPA filters in additional spaces. It's important to note and for the community to understand that some of the students in this phase cannot, for medical or other reasons, wear masks. So they are in our buildings, not always wearing masks. We've all come to kind of understand the precautions and the level of safety that that provides, but a number of the students in this particular phase aren't able to engage, uh, safely in that way. So we have other precautions staff are taking. We've had them all trained in PPE and additional, um, personal protective equipment. For example, they might be wearing a face shield with an N95 mask. They're working with a student who's not able to wear a mask of their own, put additional ventilation in that room, as an example. Um, but it's important for folks to understand why this particular group of students needs to be really spread out, um, in a different way than you might approach bringing in the whole, uh, school population as well. Um, we have put in an additional mask order, and we're doing all this with this sort of hopeful idea that we're going to continue moving through our phases, right? Best intentions. Um, but of course, looking at newer data, um, it's, it's always a dance between, uh, the goal of bringing back all of our students and adjusting in real time to what is happening in our community and responding, as you saw with the governor, for example, rolling things back. Um, so I think that, um, that's all I'll say about that phase and how it's going. And again, just tremendous appreciation to the community. Um, I also want to say that while we continue to hear from some folks that are eager for their students to return from remote to in-person in coming phases, that we also continue to hear from some folks who are just really thriving in the remote learning environment. Um, I want to just say that our teachers are continuing every day in their remote work. We hired a remote learning specialist with the support and vote of this school committee. That person is now supporting our teachers across the district. Uh, Rachel Cummings is a teacher that was, uh, working as a tech teacher previously and doing a lot of training, applied for and was hired into the remote learning specialist for the district. So we now have somebody dedicated to supporting our teachers and excelling with their remote teaching. And, um, one thing in closing, I'll note that the commissioner of education recently released or is in the process of releasing reviews of everyone's remote learning plans, and they essentially are auditing how much times teachers are providing live instruction versus asynchronous instruction. And I think Greenfield got this right out of the gate this fall. Um, we really took all the feedback we learned from the spring, and teachers are giving it their all, and they've been really engaging with live instruction right from the beginning, whereas other districts are really having to make pretty significant adjustments to come up to closer to time on learning requirements. As you remember, that was a big part of our planning. So I just want to give a shout out to our teachers. Um, just because we're in remote, they are not coasting. They're working hard. And those of you at home that are supporting your students, um, despite the challenges, they're very real challenges, and we know that. And we want to thank you for making it as productive as it can be on your end and for the teachers doing the same. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'm also equally impressed. As you know, I'm doing second grade again, and, uh, the teaching, the instruction has really been fantastic. So I can, I, I can attest at least to a handful of teachers and IAs that I interact with, that's really, uh, been top notch. Um, any questions or comments for the superintendent on her report?
I have a few comments.
Please. Member Johnson Musad, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you, Superintendent Harper, for giving us the moment of silence to recognize, uh, attorney Smith. And, um, I had the opportunity to go to the, the Shiva and hear your remarks at there and just the relationship that you and he had, the working relationship. I know it's a, uh, it's a loss for all of us, but in particular for you, and just want to acknowledge that. Thank you for taking the time to be there and to, um, support the family and, um, to share that moment of silence with us. Also, I'm just impressed, you know, that, I mean, the teachers could get a doctor's note and say, you know, I'm, I have a reason I can't be in school, you know, whatever. But they're showing up in these, in these situations where the young people can't be wearing the mask. And I just think it's just a testament to the, the level of caring and commitment, um, that the teachers have, um, that obviously the precautions, you know, that they're taking are, are important, but they're not fail safe. And so there is a risk they're taking every day they come into those classrooms and just, uh, please extend our appreciation to them for, for what they're doing. It's making a big difference to those families.
I certain will. Thank you very much.
Very well said. Member Johnson Musad, thank you. Any other questions or comments for the superintendent? Okay. I do think we at least had a report from, um,
Do you have a report, Chair Poiroti? Chair's report?
I already, I already bypassed the chair's report. I have no report tonight. We're going long enough. You don't need to be, me to be squawking at you. Um, subcommittee reports, I know, uh, member Wall, you wanted to report from, was it planning and construction? Is that right?
I have two reports. I want to say that we're having a redrawing meeting, subcommittee meeting tomorrow at two. And so if anybody would like to join us, please do. And I also have been asked to serve on the committee to review the RFPs for the Green River School heating system. And I wanted to let you know that we had five submissions, two of which have been discarded. So there are still three people that want to work on this project. But it, the heating system will not be completed until probably September.
Wow. That's a big change in the timeline.
Yep. And I'll keep you informed. You know, we've still got to choose a contractor, you know, with the whole process to go through, but I thought you should be aware of that.
Thank you. Does that complete your reports?
Yep.
I think that's the most you've ever talked in a meeting. Good job. Proud of you. Any questions? Any questions or comments for member Wall on her reports? Any other subcommittees need or want to report this evening? Okay. So we will move.
It looks like she was dying to say something. She leaned in.
She's on mute. I don't know. Mayor Weidergardner, did you have something to say? No. Um, okay. So item five on the agenda, appointment of a second racial justice advisory committee member. Um, this is, uh, going to be, my, my appointment is going to be, uh, member Katie Karen, who, uh, expressed interest very early on. Um, and I did check in with her that she is willing to, uh, serve. So the, um, committee will be member Johnson Musad and member Karen. Um, and it is an advisory committee, just as a note. So there will be public, um, involvement in that committee, and I look forward to you guys, uh, getting started and letting us know how it's going, keeping us up to date. Any discussion, any questions, comments about that? Quickest item ever, right? Okay. So item six is, uh, school committee webpage content changes. Hopefully this one will be kind of quick. Um, there is in your packet, uh, I believe it's materials one, the first, yes. And it is page five of that packet, if you didn't already look at it. Um, the language on the landing page for the school committee, um, is a little outdated. Uh, talks about us meeting at the Johnson Center and whatnot. Um, and so I, I quickly, as soon as I saw it, made an update and then was informed we have a policy that has to come to the school committee to be, um, approved. So I would like a motion to approve the, uh, updated language as proposed in the materials for this evening. Hopefully everyone read it. Motion. Those, member Wall with the motion in a second?
Second, Johnson Musad.
Okay. Any discussion?
I appreciate the, the update, and I think it gives people more information about different ways to connect virtually. Um, so really appreciate the, the work on that.
Thank you. It was, it was not a lot of work. It was very quick, but it needed to happen. Any other questions or comments? So we could vote on this then. A roll call vote, please.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Poiroti? Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergardner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful. Thank you. And so now we have, um, two items related to open meeting law complaints that were, uh, with the school committee. One has already been resolved, and that's item seven. Uh, it, it, it is included in the packet of materials, packet one. Um, and it was on, we received it on October 30th. We already met, um, and discussed it in an executive session and felt like it should actually be brought to a public session. So in basically, uh, the wrong link was on an agenda page, uh, for a meeting that we had, and, uh, people had trouble accessing because the link was incorrect. We have, uh, drafted a response and sent that response to both the complainant and, uh, the attorney general's office as required by law, and those are included in the packet tonight. Uh, I will happily take any discussion or questions from the school committee on this, should we have them. We did have a very, I think, very productive discussion, and one of the things that came out of the discussion we had actually is on, you can see it on the agenda for tonight's meeting, um, that we've added a footer at the bottom of every agenda that includes the various ways you can connect to a meeting, um, of the school committee. Anything else on that?
Yeah, I would just say, um, the public should also know that there's a way to sign up on the school committee, um, on the school's website to get updates about events, including school committee meetings. So, um, there are lots of different ways to kind of keep in the know about what's going on.
Thank you. Yeah. That is an important one. If you, and that is in the footer as well on the bottom of the agenda. Um, you can subscribe to updates right from the GPS, the landing page. Um, and for example, when an agenda is posted for a meeting, you would actually get an email if you're subscribed, uh, to get those notifications. So it, it's kind of convenient, um, to help you know when meetings are happening and what's going on. Any other discussion on that one? Any other discussion on that one? Okay, so now we have another open meeting law complaint that we are going to actually deliberate tonight. We got a complaint on November 17th that we need to respond to, that is in, again, the packet. And I will read portions of the alleged violation so we can have a discussion and decide how to respond. So the complainant writes, "At the school committee meeting on October 14, many people attended with the intention of speaking during the public comment period at the beginning of the meeting. Before public comment began, Chair Poiety proactively declared the committee would allow only one comment specifically in support of increased racial justice funding and programming. She seemed to suggest everyone who was there to speak in support of this particular issue should somehow immediately choose a single spokesperson that could communicate instantaneously, none of which was true. I believe many individuals did attend the meeting that evening to speak in support of increased racial justice work in the schools, each for their own reasons. I'm aware it may be up to the chair to determine how much space is allowed for public comment and generally to direct the meeting according to the agenda, but it is not in the spirit of the law, I believe, nor of opening, open meeting rules to specifically limit public comments on a given issue. Moreover, for a white person in a position of power to proactively reject and restrict public comment specifically regarding racism and racial justice in our schools was shocking and racist. I believe this decision by Chair Poiety violates the spirit of open meeting law." So what we need to do is actually discuss as a school committee and draft a response. So I'm happy to start. The first thing that I would say is that, for I believe three meetings prior to the one in question, we spent a great deal of time in public comment hearing almost identical comments from people in support of anti-racism programming in the schools. And I did not once hear, in all of those meetings, anyone saying they thought it was a bad idea for us to do anti-racism programming. And the reality of this is, we didn't violate the open meeting law. We, this chair, it's at the discretion of the chair, how public comment works. And we need to be able to move forward with the business of the school committee. So that, I think, would be my full comment on that. Are there other discussion items, questions? Mayor Rita Gardner, go ahead.
I just wanted to reiterate that, in my experience, and I've had quite a bit in public hearings, both as a school committee chairperson and as a planning board chairperson. And it is, there are two things that stand out that the public, particularly the ones who are bringing this complaint, need to understand, and that is that the school committee is free to create their own policy about speaking at two items only on the agenda. And that is our policy, and I think it's been our policy for a long time. It was certainly the policy when I chaired a few moons ago. So, and that is the policy of the planning board, it is the policy of almost every public-facing board that does do public hearings. So I'm in agreement that we did not violate the open meeting law with that. The other thing I wanted to say is, also supported by law, case law, that it is the purview of the chair to control how public speaking does occur. So these are cases that have come before adjudicatory bodies in the past, and they, as a general rule, have always supported the committee so named. So whether it's school committee, planning board, CBA, any of those. So I support it, and I support our continuing it because while it's important to hear from the public, as we did tonight, and we had, as you know, well over an hour of, between public comment and discussion, on this single issue, that, I lost my train of thought, that we keep to that policy, because we have business to do. It isn't that we come together on these every other week just to hear from the public and then fold up and go home. We actually have actual business to do. And we can't have public comment that goes on and on and on forever without some control on when it begins and when it ends. We can't control their speech and what they say, much as we sometimes want to, but we can control the amount of time, the subject matter, and so forth.
Thank you, Mayor. Remember Johnson Musad, go ahead.
I guess, well, first of all, I'd like to clarify that at the last, or one of the last meetings, Vice Chair Ekstrom was facilitating when you were away, Chair Poiety, and limited discussion to items that were on the agenda. But this particular complaint was about limiting public comment on something that actually was on the agenda that night, so just to be clear. So, and then I think that, you know, whether, well, I guess, first of all, I think that we have had a precedent as a school committee of welcoming comment on any topic that is related to the school. So I know that precedent isn't what this is about, this is about whether or not there's an open meeting law violation. I'm not sure, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know the details on whether it's an open meeting law violation. I don't know if you've had discussions, Chair Poiety, with our attorney about their perspective on that. But I would say that the relevant document here is our own policy, which we do have, on public participation at school committee meetings. And I'd like to read briefly part of that. That "At the start of each regularly scheduled school committee meeting, individuals or group representatives will be invited to address the committee. The chairperson shall determine the length of the public participation segment." So I think you could determine that the length of the entire public participation segment is 30 minutes or one hour, or however long. But that speakers will be allowed three minutes to present their material, the presiding chairperson may permit extension of this time limit. Topics of this discussion must be limited to those items listed on the school committee meeting agenda for that evening. So I guess my comment is that it looks like our own policy gives you leeway in terms of the overall length of the public comment period, but actually doesn't give you leeway to say what topics people choose to express. And I think that the reason why it's important is that the number of people who speak to an issue is important. The different voices of people who speak are important, the different ways that people express their views are important. And I happen to know that there were, in particular, young people of color who had been, you know, especially encouraged to come and share their views at school committee meeting, and those voices weren't heard that night. And I think it was a discouraging, had a discouraging effect on young people who have been disenfranchised. So I know that, I don't think that the intent was racist, but I think that our intentions as white people aren't always what matters, and I think that the impact can be quite hard, even though we're just trying to run an efficient meeting and get out at a reasonable hour. And my own regret is that I wasn't familiar enough with our own policy on public comment, and I could have, or any member of this body could have raised a point of order and said, you know, I think people, I'm not sure, you know, I don't think that you should stop people from speaking on this particular topic. And I didn't, and I regret that. So I don't know exactly how it sits in terms of responding to an open meeting law complaint. I'm not sure whether, you know, if we agree as a body that we violated our own policy on this, whether that means that we're in violation of open meeting law, but it does seem like the person deserves a response from us that we didn't actually follow our own policy.
Member Ekstrom, and then Member Hollins, and then Member Karen.
We actually do have precedence of limiting comments to a singular person when there's been multiple comments made on any topic. And by virtue, and this is me thinking out loud, by virtue of saying we have to hear all of the comments related to this particular topic demonstrates a bias towards listening to all of the comments on this topic as opposed to not listening to all the comments on any topic. And as the mayor pointed out, the intention is for the school committee to be able to conduct their business. And we have more business than we can handle at this point. So the practice wasn't without its merit, and certainly has precedence. I can think of at least three or four times when Chair Nunez was chair, that that similar thing happened, or that similar limiting of comments from the public on, to a single, numbers of comments from the public on a single topic was limited.
Thank you. Member Hollins, go ahead.
Like everything we discussed, there's so many different strands to this, but the issue on the table for us to decide is responding to a complaint that we violated the law. The law is the law, our policies are not state law. I don't think we violated state law. And regardless of my personal feeling of any of this, we have to respond to the state. Did we violate the law? I think the answer to that is no, and we should shape our comment in response to that specific portion of this discussion. I don't know if people would agree, but I think Chair Poiety should craft a response, I don't think we violated the law. On the subject of communicating with the public, I just want to say, and I hope it doesn't sound insensitive, that the public has different avenues, unlimited avenues to connect with us. They can write to us, 100 people can write to us, we read every letter. One of the things we could improve maybe is letting the public know, I mean, just our own policy during a public comment, that maybe we want to share some comments we've received that aren't voiced. I mean, writing is a different way to have a voice, we might do a better job of that, and maybe someone wants to write, I don't know, 100 people could write to us on a subject. But I want to remind the public that they have many objects, options to contact us. Someone contacted me this morning out of the blue. But we don't have options about when we can do the business of school committee meeting. We have a hard time scheduling, we only have so much time, it gets too late, no one can think straight. And I mean, we are constrained when we can do business of the school, but the public isn't constrained, it's not limited to just voice, and we do meet every two weeks. I don't think it's unreasonable, regardless of the demographic of the person, and I've seen it over and over in different meetings, someone wants to comment on the same topic for the chair to say, is there something different you want to add so that we keep new ideas coming forward? But anyway, the whole issue of our getting, our getting involved in the details of school administration, I think this is why school committees don't, we're all supportive of looking internally at our systemic issues and program issues with racism. It's really administrative. Anyway, that's my thought, we should respond. It's great to keep this discussion of how to best adapt our policies to be, have open communication, but the response to this, I think we didn't break the law, and that's what we have to decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Karen?
A second. So I agree, I don't think we actually broke the law. And I understand that we do have precedence for this, but I think part, it has been a little bit since I've had to really read an open meeting law complaint form, part of it is our response, not just, oh, we didn't do it. We can also respond with actions we plan to take. And even though we may not have broken open meeting law, there are actions we can take as a committee to make sure this type of a situation does not arise again. It could be that we write our policy for more clarity, that a chair has an ability to limit the number of comments coming in, if that's the choice we would like to make. It needs to be able to be implemented equilaterally. It's not, and I get that, some nights we have a small agenda and we can listen to 300 people talk to us. I mean, some nights it'd be cool if 300 people cared what we had to say, but I don't know that there are. I also, I think it also could be really important at an upcoming meeting to put on our agenda a clear conversation about how we handle public comment. I am consistently getting asked about, just, I mean, I don't really walk down the street anymore, but about how we handle public comment. Why didn't I not get an email back? Why did nobody respond to my questions? Why did I get told I couldn't talk about anything? If we just had, I know we are overwhelmed with work right now, but I think it could be important to respond to this with clarity, like, hey, I hear what you're saying, I can understand how that felt really terrible, that was not our intention, this is our policy we're following, this is the way we plan to implement it more equally, and this is the way you can communicate with us, and these are expectations you should have in return. I think that part of the problem is the lack of clarity in that policy, and it's somewhat purposeful so that we're not too prescriptive, because each chair has a different way of running the meetings. But when you're talking about an issue of equality already, and then to have it feel like it's not being done equally, I imagine just felt pretty terrible. And in the moment, I didn't think too much about it, but I too later was like, yeah, I don't think, I do not think you did anything incorrect, Chair, I think we needed to move forward. I just think maybe we, as a committee, can do a better job of making your job easier and the community's understanding of our policy better.
Thank you. Very well said. Mayor Rita Gardner, please.
Since a couple of people have reminded us that what you're doing, what you're looking for is guidance on how to respond to the open meeting law complaint with a clear statement that we did not violate it. If you like, I would read to you what the open meeting law guide says on public participation, and that will help clarify it.
That would be a dream, because I can't navigate the meeting, I can't run the meeting and look it up at the same time, and I didn't look it up ahead of time. Please.
I'm happy to read it, just so people on the committee understand what, and people listening understand what the actual law says about it. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to attend meetings of public bodies but is excluded from an executive session that is called for a valid purpose listed in the law. While the public body is permitted to attend an open meeting, an individual may not address the public body without permission of the chair. An individual may not disrupt a meeting of a public body, and at the request of the chair, all members of the public must be silent. If, after clear warning, a person continues to be disruptive, the chair may order the person to leave the meeting. If the person does not leave, the chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person. Although public participation is entirely within the chair's discretion, the Attorney General encourages public bodies to allow as much public participation as time permits. Any member of the public may make an audio or video recording of the open session of a public meeting. A member of the public who wishes to record a meeting must first notify the chair, et cetera. The chair is required to inform other attendees of any such recording at the beginning of the meeting. If someone arrives after the meeting has begun and wishes to record a meeting, that person should attempt to notify the chair. This is all about recording, not quite what we're talking about, but I'll finish. Prior to beginning recording, ideally in a manner that does not significantly disrupt the meeting in progress, such as passing a note for the chair to the board administrator or secretary. The chair should endeavor to acknowledge such attempts at notification and announce the fact of any recording to those in the audience. So that is, more importantly, the other two paragraphs that, and the sentence that ended, "The Attorney General encourages public bodies to-" the Attorney General encourages public bodies to allow as much participation as time permits. But I think it's clear in reading that, that even with our policies, which is what has to guide us through, through our meetings so that we don't break the law, I think it's pretty clear that we did not break the law under the circumstances. At least, it's clear to me.
Further comment? Member Hollins, do you have your hand up? Okay, yeah, go ahead.
I think your response should be something like, on December 9th, at our public school committee meeting, we read out loud for ourselves and the public the Attorney General's guidance on open meeting law and public participation, and then our vote on whether we think we violated the law. And then it should say something like, we're sensitive to the importance of public communication, and are taking the complainant's interest and our own interest under review for policy review, or something like that. I, I just want to say, personally, I was uncomfortable with that exchange at our last meeting, but I didn't interrupt. I don't know the demographic of anyone participating, there was just a long agenda, and I remember it feeling uncomfortable. I think if we're going to say, and typically, historically, you would have a meeting in a place, there would be packets on the table and extra copies of the agenda, so anybody attending would have a copy of the agenda, they could just quickly look on their lap to see what are the topics. In this forum, it's really hard to know what the agenda items on is, are, if someone says we're only going to discuss items on the agenda, and not to say what those are. So I, I agree with Kate, I think we should take it under advisement and look at how we do public participation. But I think we can move on, and that's my suggestion on how to respond. I appreciate the mayor actually reading this, so we can all hear what the law says. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a comment?
Sure. Member Johnson Musad, and then Member Wall.
Just, I encourage us in thinking about how to respond, that yes, we do have to respond to the legalistic issue and say, we did not apparently break open meeting law. But I just would encourage the chair, or when you're responding, to remember there's a human being on the other side, and also that many eyes are, are watching and many ears are listening, and people who have been disenfranchised and who came to a meeting, just to really think about those people and, and the impact, so that, I just think that there's a danger that we, as a school committee, can respond in a way that is, that meets our, our legalistic duty without kind of showing compassion for any harm that may have been caused by the, by the, by the, the way that the policy was implemented.
Sure. And hopefully, my precedent of the last response I did shows that I do much appreciate the public engaging with us regardless of how, even if it's an open meeting complaint. And we have to show that we're all in this as a community together. This is not an us versus them in any way. And I did, while we were, while we, while we've been discussing, like I did the previous time, I've taken a bunch of notes, and I've identified actions that we could take. The actions include, improve our policy on public comment. For example, the chair can limit the number of comments coming in, offer an agenda item in the future with a conversation in public session on how we handle public comment, and then reading out loud the public comment section of the open meeting law at tonight's meeting. And there, I'm happy to take down any other actions, but I feel like I do have at this point enough to craft a response. Member Wall, please, go ahead.
I would like to say that I think that there was no way that you had any clue who wanted to speak, what their identifying factors were or anything, and if I remember correctly, you said, if anyone has anything different they would like to add to the discussion, please speak at this time. I do think that we should clarify our position on public speaking, that that would be a good discussion to have at some later date, but I do think that criticizing you for being unkind is not fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Wall. Further discussion? Okay, so as I've done previously, I will craft the response, I will send it off to the complainant as well as the AG's office. I'll get a copy to, into the packet for our next meeting, so that it can be shared with the committee and the public, and I appreciate all of your thoughts and ideas. Member Hollins, another comment on this?
Yes, I just wanted to say, as far as I'm concerned, I wouldn't mind if you wrote a separate response to the complainant with maybe something different than you want to say strictly to the AG about their oversight with the law, if you wanted to do that, would be fine.
That sounds like a lot of work, but okay, that might be a good idea. Anything else? That was a good discussion, thank you, guys. You gotta find my agenda, I have 40,000 windows open here. Okay, let's see.
I think we're done. The executive session.
Yes, we do, we do need to have an executive session, and I noticed that actually all, what's there, executive session will be called MGLC 30A subsection 21, which is actually all of the exemptions. The two we're talking about tonight are exemptions number, I believe it's two and three, hang on, I have the window open, and I will read them. Okay, so number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And then exemption number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating, litigating position of the product, public body, and the chair so declares, and I do declare.
Also, number 10.
And exemption number 10, thank you. To discuss trade secrets or confidential, competitively sensitive, or other proprietary information provided in the course of activities conducted by a government body as an energy supplier?
No, it's, because we have to do, we have to review executive session minutes, and that is trade secret, confidential, competitively sensitive.
Yeah, for, for approving executive session minutes, so they can be released to the public. There you go. We need a vote, and we will not be returning to the public session, there's no votes anticipated this evening. I appreciate all of the.
I'm sorry, just a quick clarification, sometimes we will approve minutes and not release them immediately, we release them at the time when the, the information is no longer strategic.
Absolutely, yeah. Yes, it doesn't mean we're releasing them right away, yes. Now people are going to request them. Anyway.
There's nothing fun there, I swear.
Thank you to everyone who participated tonight, thank you for everyone, being such good, community-engaged participants, it's very appreciated. It was very helpful to have all of the smart folks at the table today to work through, particularly the winter athletics stuff, and I wish everyone good health and happy holidays. And let's do a roll call vote, or a motion for the, to enter executive session, please.
So move, Johnson Musad.
And a second.
Ekstrom.
And a roll call vote, please.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
For Terry Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Prayati?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergartner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and a motion to close the public session.
So move, Johnson Musad.
And a second.
Weidergartner.
Member Karen?
I don't know who it was.
Oh, no, I was starting, I'm sorry, I was starting the roll call, trying to get too speedy here.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Let's see, Member, Chair Prayati?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergartner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and that adjourns us.